Well, good evening. Welcome to our Community of the Whole meeting tonight on Monday, June 10th. My name is Jay Brennan, councillor, and I'll begin with our land acknowledgement. On June 10th, 2024, we acknowledge that the sacred land on Smith Falls is now located as been a site of human activity for over 10,000 years in its rich and indigenous history. This land is the ancestral and unceded territory of the Algonquin Anishwabi Nation. We are grateful to the Algonquin ancestors who cared for the land and water in order that we might meet here today. We are also grateful to the Algonquin people for their contribution in the making of the Rideau Canal, which runs through Smith Falls. We are mindful of broken covenants and need to reconcile all our relations. Together, may we care for this land and each other, drawing on the strength of our mutual history of nation building through peace and friendship and being mindful of generations to come. So we'll begin the meeting tonight. We have regrets from my colleagues councillor McGuire and councillor Quinn. So I'll call to order tonight at 5:01. I have a recommended motion to be passed that the June 10th Committee of the Whole Meeting agenda be approved as circulated. Moved by councillor Robinson, second by councillor Miller. All in favour? Passed. Any disclosure of pecuniary interest and/or conflict of interest in general nature thereof? Seeing none. So approval of minutes, that the minutes of the committee hold... We have no approval of minutes, sorry.
Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh, not on here. Of the May 27th Committee of the Whole Meeting be approved as circulated. Councillor McKenna? Councillor Mayor Law in favour? Passed. So I want to welcome our first delegation, and I must say that since this chamber has been refurbished, this is a record, and I have never seen so many people for a long time in the chamber, so thank you for coming. So we do have a delegation, and the Smith Falls Community Theatre Foundation is here. I understand that Jamie Schooler will be speaking to us tonight, correct? So welcome, Jamie, and we look forward to your presentation.
Well, thank you very much for giving us an opportunity to speak to you this evening. I'm going to go quickly through the first half of the slide deck. I know that all of you have received a copy of that deck, but I think it's important for us to just review quickly a bit of the history of the station theatre. So, Smith Falls Community Theatre has had an excellent working relationship with the town of Smith Falls for almost 25 years, and we look forward to continuing this positive relationship for the next 25 years. Next slide, please. As you know, there's been a community theatre in Smith Falls for over 50 years. This latest iteration has been doing shows for over 25 years. You may recall that in 2000, CP Rail informed the town of Smith Falls that they no longer wished to use the train station and were considering demolishing it. Next slide, please. The town, recognizing its heritage value, agreed to purchase the building, which was built in 1888, from Canadian Pacific for the sum of $1. Now, the town then asked if any group in town would be interested in doing something with the building. The Smith Falls Community Theatre answered the call and entered into a landlord-tenant agreement. This turned out to be a pretty sweet deal for the town, as the landlord, the town had purchased a teardown structure for $1, and the theatre group took charge of converting this teardown into a uniquely beautiful 144-seat entertainment venue that is unlike anything else that you will find anywhere. Everything from the walls out belongs to the town; everything inside the theatre is the property of the Smith Falls Community Theatre. Next slide, please. Under the expert leadership of the late Pat Smith, the work got underway. The theatre group hired an architect, Jeff Hodgins from Perth, and a local contractor, Jerry Pepper from Smith Falls, and undertook the renovations. Next slide. A fundraising campaign generated all kinds of donations from individuals, groups, businesses, and organizations. Thanks to the volunteer work of individuals like Nancy Younger, who took charge of writing grant proposals, we received three separate grants from the Trillium Corporation that amounted to around $300,000. Next slide, please. First step was to spend money to make the building structurally sound. And when I say it was a teardown, I happen to be there when we opened the doors to take possession. Takedown is probably being kind. It was a mess. It required a lot of work. First step was to make it structurally sound. Next slide, please. Step two was to upgrade the exterior of the building. Volunteers gave of their time to help with renovations, doing everything from tearing down to building up again, painting and moving equipment into the theatre. Next slide. Step three was to begin to build the interior. Next slide, please. Number 10. Now, pardon me?
One more.
Let's see. This is where I have to get into a little bit of help with my... Is that the wing? Oh, yeah. So, okay, so, yeah. Next one was, much of the second floor was removed, part of it had to be maintained and stabilized, and it would serve as the theatre support area. Next slide. A local gentleman, Wayne Henwood, volunteered with the technical aspects of the renovations, so sound and light arrangements. Next slide. Costumes and props were all organized by volunteers. Work had recently been done to build a new entrance, and that was the next step along the way. We then had to, next slide, put in risers for 140 seats, which we picked up from the National Arts Centre. Thanks to Terry Wills, who donated a trailer, we went down and our volunteers loaded on about 160 seats and brought them back for future use. Next slide, please. And there you see a picture of the risers and the seats as they were placed into the theatre. Then, the next slide. So, we opened our doors on April 24th, 2010. It should be noted that no work was done unless the money was available to pay for it. After 10 years of renovations, we opened the doors to the new theatre. We did so totally debt-free, and we continue to operate every year since with money in the bank. Next slide, please. We then put together a green room where the actors prepare for their productions. Next slide. And then we have a workshop, which is located underneath the stage, with all kinds of equipment being donated for construction of sets. Next slide. And we then have improvements that have been made to the theatre over the last number of years, and I'm just going to go through a couple of those. Since the theatre has been formed, almost a quarter century ago, volunteers have been its bedrock. While no official counting of volunteers or the hours that they put in has been done, in 2016, we began to keep a record of how many and who. By 2023, over 300 volunteers have contributed their talents and time to our productions and rental events, and counting. Of note, 94 are youth and several are now involved as adults. Please bear in mind, all performers, stagehands, tech people, hair, makeup, costumes are all volunteers. Including rentals, Smith Falls Community Theatre volunteers are there to assist with everything from ticket sales to tech and other needs of the renters. A typical one-day or night event involves two or three volunteers to manage the load-in and load-out, plus the time of the event, a minimum of typically six hours, three hours prior to the show, two-plus hours of show, and two hours to load-out and clean up. If that staffing was to be paid, using just Ontario's minimum wage of $17 an hour, it would cost $305 per night, plus the amount of required government amounts. Our event package is typically $405 per night. A full clean of our theatres, our theatre, is $475. Let's see. Next slide, please. So, most of our shows have sold out performances, and even when not sold out, we have been fortunate to have a high percentage of our seats sold. We maintain a ticket price of $20 for adults and $10 for youth up until last year, when, due to increased costs, for example, cleaning costs, costs of the rights and scripts, costumes, et cetera, we have had to raise our adult price by $2, and this year by another $2, which is in line with other community theatres. However, we have maintained our youth tickets at $10. We don't typically collect data for how many attendees are from out of town, but this year, we have looked at that, and for our first two shows, this year, we had an average of 86% attendees from outside of Smith Falls. We have a presence on Facebook, Instagram, YouTube, and issue a newsletter that reaches about 1,700 subscribers. We take out ads in the Hum and MyFM, and of course, we put our printed flyers across town. Next slide, please. In May 2012, we purchased and installed a projector and screen to start showing films to fill the gap of when the town cinema closed down. We have increased accessibility of the front entrance by installing automatic door-opening panels. Ongoing painting and repairing of usage damage. We have recovered the seats, and I'll speak to that in a minute. We redid stage curtains to create wings, create a space for local artists to showcase and sell their art, and we purchased hearing assist equipment. We also have enhanced the appearance of our washrooms. Next slide, please. Our rentals have done very well in attendance, with many experiencing full houses and wishing to return. We've received incredible accolades from our renters. Here's one from a recent rental, the Todd Reed Comedy Caravan. He says, "Thanks again for the incredible experience at the station theatre. We all loved it. In fact, of the hundreds of venues I've performed at over the years, it's my favorite. You're not a small venue, you're mighty. I really love it there. This was our first year touring as the Comedy Caravan." I'd like to get to the point where people in that area know that we are going to be there in early March, and they'll be planning on attending our show every year, and they have now rebooked for March 2025. Here's one from the Red Dirt Skinners. They say, "We wanted to write and thank you all so much for one of the smoothest events we have ever been involved in. Your staff were fantastic, and we and our audience were thrilled with the evening." And they have experienced a sold-out show and have rebooked again for this year. Jill Barber, an internationally known performer who performs at the NAC, wanted to return to our theatre to perform because of how much she loved it. And these are only a few of the accolades that we've received from out-of-town performers. I'm conscious of the time here, so I'm talking very quickly. Programming. We now produce six shows a year. Rights for shows have increased substantially. Each show requires many hours of rehearsal, costuming, set building, painting, set decor, et cetera. We've had a healthy amount of rentals in the last 12-month period and 46 days' housing rentals compared to our 42 days' housing our play performances. Let's see. So, next slide, please. And I just have to, and I'll take the next one as well, too, I think. Yes, there we go. Okay, we're recording it. Okay, all right. Deep breath. So, in 2010, when we opened up, we produced three shows. 2011, we had 185 days when the theatre was being used, and some of those folks that did use it besides our local group. We had Freddie Dixon, who's a local entertainer. We did the Willis College Graduation, the Rideau Heritage Tour, Annual General Meeting, the Rotary Club Ladies Night. In 2012, the theatre was booked 150 days, and we had Film Night International, we had Elvis Elvis and independent film screening, a book launch. Then we moved to 2013, and we increased to 208 days of usage. We had the Patsy Cline Tribute, the Rod Stewart Tribute, the Heritage Symposium. These are a number of things that happened. Next slide. And you can see, without going through all of the different years, that usage has gradually increased, and if you can read that, you'll note that there's a variety of different usages. We have our local theatre productions, for sure. We have musical groups. We have activities like high school graduations. So it's a multi-use facility. We have, 2018, 272 days that the theatre was in use, and again, a wide variety of usages. Next slide, please. And again, we just go through, this slide goes through the number of days that it was used and the variety of usages, and I won't take the time to read each one of those. And, next slide. So far this year, so, that is right, we're right on. Okay, so, this year, we are 109 days to June 10th, and we have, again, a wide variety of people who are coming in to make use of the theatre. We have a summer program that has been lined up, and one of the things that we've done, thanks to Linda Daniluk and her crew, every summer, we run a children's production. And we feel that this is a great outlet for young people in our town, who often complain that there's not enough going on, which I don't believe that's the truth, but it offers an alternative other than sports, because not everybody is into hockey. Right, William? So, in summary, and that brings us to the last slide. Ladies and gentlemen, I have the last slide. We have put on 75 shows, one involving challenged adults, 25 involving youth. We've hosted Canadian talents such as Stuart McLean. How many of you remember that? That was a great evening. We had Michael Burgess here, the late Michael Burgess. Jill Barber, who is just a fantastic person to have in a small theatre like ours, and a number of other folks that you can see up there. We have movie weekends every month, high school show performances most years. We've provided tours and school drama workshops, as well as other workshops for actors both youth and adult. Rentals for music concerts, comedy shows, magic shows, dance, and other recitals. Whenever we receive a rental request, we do our utmost to accommodate the dates that are being requested, but it's not always possible to fit what is asked for into the calendar as it exists, but we do our best. We have one part-time employee who is paid a fraction of hours per week to manage our website, promotion, ticket sales, phone, et cetera. Suffice it to say that this employee volunteers for most of the time that she spends in doing theatre business. One of the things that I missed that was in the slideshow was the fact that we, the money that is taken in by the theatre is put back into the theatre. For example, the seats that we got from the National Arts Centre have all been reupholstered at a cost of about $40,000, and we had that done locally by Joe's Upholstery, right across the street. So we try to put the money that we get from shows and other activities back into our theatre, but also keep in mind local merchants and how we can subsidize the local economy, if you will. I would really encourage anybody who goes to our website to take a look at an 11-minute video that the late Tom Folkes made. He was a patron of the theatre, and he put together a really great 11-minute presentation on the theatre. And I would encourage anybody who is here tonight to get to know the theatre a little bit better. At the very least, you can be an audience member. We're always looking for volunteers. We need people backstage, front of house, and who knows, maybe even that acting skill that you have deep down inside of you might have that opportunity to showcase itself in one of our shows. So, I would be happy to entertain any questions that... Oh, one other thing, I'll read, just a very quick, this is from a patron. She says, "This is one of many letters that we get, God of support. First, I'd like to commend the board, staff, and volunteers for providing a community theatre venue in Smith Falls since 2010. It takes a tremendous amount of work to make that happen. The film and other media supported show how important the organization is to the cultural life of the town. I have attended events since the theatre began. I live in Ottawa, spend time in Rideau Lakes in the summer, and make a point of attending theatre events." So we do bring a lot of people from out of town to our town, and, you know, before or after the show, they'll visit our restaurants, perhaps stay overnight. It's a great opportunity to showcase our town. So, that's my presentation. I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Jamie, and as everyone knows, politicians are bad actors. But yes, questions and comments from my colleagues. Councillor Miller?
Thank you so much, Jamie, and thanks to everybody for coming and for all the work that you do. It's an absolute gem that we have at the theatre, and it's really nice to see the usage rebounding since COVID. The arts community was hit so hard. So, congratulations on that, and thanks for bringing us up to speed.
Thanks. Mayor Pankow?
Jamie and everyone, thank you for being here tonight. One, fortunate by the group, it's been 10 years, and having the vision and the commitment and fundraising to actually make this free. I've been there countless times in the last number of years, and it's great to see the faces of people who are either onstage or backstage, and obviously an incredible commitment of volunteerism to make this happen and to ensure it continues to happen. And I see Matt Connell just walked in, and of course, we were there yesterday for Amber, for the recital, for the hub, Music and Arts LLC, and things like that, where you've got even local people who are taking music lessons at the opportunity to get onstage and perform and have the confidence to do so. It's a great venue, there's no question, it's a wonderful venue, and I think it's been a great partnership. It's something we have accountability to our taxpayers for, we commit to it every year, and I think your opportunity to be here today, and as much as I appreciate the work it took to put together a slideshow, and for everyone to be here, certainly you're all supporters, but to demonstrate to the community the commitment it takes to pull this together and to deliver so much value to our town, as I mentioned, hundreds of days every single year. So I don't think I have a question, but I guess really it's expression of gratitude. We have responsibility to maintain the structure, maintain the facility. You've mentioned you own, that your group owns everything inside. We own the building, and our commitment, I guess, examples is in redoing the front steps and the walkway and the interlock, recognizing when there are needs, probably 10 years ago now, I guess, repointing the building. So we have a responsibility, and I guess when it comes to our constituents, it's a matter of them understanding the value that this brings to our community and help justify the commitment and the investment we continue to make in this.
Right.
And we know that over time, it will be an ongoing investment, you know, and like any other asset we have, we have an asset management plan which indicates sort of the condition of all of our assets, forecasts a plan to say, when do we need to invest in what and when and how much, and this fits, of course, into that. So, I think there's been some challenges and bumps over the years. Our interest is trying to make sure this facility and everyone involved provides the best possible value to the community. And I think your, one, your commitment here, your ongoing demonstration of events, small theatre, community theatre, an opportunity for people in this room, some who I saw starting to perform when they were much younger and continue to perform a decade later or more, an opportunity to grow their confidence, their skills, their ability to speak publicly. It not just develops the community, it also develops the individuals involved. So, thank you. I look forward to, as a continued relationship of strength and collaboration and partnership. And again, I think our interest is ensuring this provides the best value for the community. And as you mentioned, 84, 86% of people who've attended recently are from outside our borders. And it's, on a very regular basis, I hear from people in their communities that, "I've never been there. I barely, I haven't heard of it, or I haven't been in, I haven't been to an event," and so it just shows that there's so much untapped opportunity even within our borders for people to get out there, to get in there and see what great things are happening. Thank you for your presentation. Thank you for everyone being here tonight. Look forward to that ongoing partnership.
Well, as I said in my opening remarks, it has been a great working relationship that we've had with the town, and we genuinely appreciate the support that the town has given to this project, and we know that we can't sustain what it is we're trying to do without that continued support, and we really do value that good working relationship that we have with town staff and with councillors as well. So, thank you for your continued support.
Councillor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thanks, Jamie. You've come a long way since Theatre Arts in high school with me, but just, I'm ready to go on with the next 10 years and sign that lease, and I'm delighted that your group is ready to do that as well.
Thank you. Councillor Robinson?
Thank you. I don't have much to say because it's already been said, other than that, thank you for being here, and that was a great presentation, Jamie.
Thanks.
You did a really good job. You should have been a school teacher.
I had thought about it. And I remember that you were in Theatre Arts class with Peter and I, were you not?
No.
Everybody knows everybody, right?
That's right.
It's great. I'll echo that, and I'll thank you for this and for the support you brought with you. And, you know, I had the pleasure of working for the local MPP when we delivered some drilling money to you guys, and also part of the Rotary Club that, you know, certainly supports it.
Huge contribution.
I think, you know, there were questions a couple of weeks ago, you've answered them, and I know it took a lot of work to put this together. So, thank you for coming, and I got to say, Tom's video was great. He was one of my best friends, I miss him dearly. And, you know, I just, he would be here if he was around, for sure. So, thanks for coming. Thank you, everybody. I would invite you to stay and watch Local Democracy in Action, which will be exciting from now on. But thank you, thank you so much.
Thanks very much.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. We do have another...
Hey, Sean. I guess we still have another. Sorry? Is it right in the corner? Oh! I guess they don't want to see Democracy in Action. It's boring.
Yeah. There's been a...
Sean, have you got a card? Thanks. John? John? Nice to meet you. Talk soon. Excellent. Thanks for being here tonight.
Okay.
That's great. You moved 20 seconds.
Yeah. Awesome. Thank you.
I appreciate that.
You have to stay.
Yes, sir.
Sure, sure, the room.
I'm sorry. Like, I know mine's a little bit more depressing.
I should inspire in many ways.
Okay, welcome. I'll just introduce you, Ray Eskrit.
Yep.
Shelter Movers Ottawa, to speak to us about intimate partner violence, shelter movers, and the need for support. So, welcome to our council meeting. I'm sorry you cleared the room, it's not personal.
It's okay. I'm used to empty rooms. After, you know, two years of COVID and now working from home, I'm used to empty rooms. It's okay. So, if we can have the next slide? So, I am the chapter director of Shelter Movers Ottawa, and our agency provides free moving and storage services to people who are fleeing abuse, whether that is intimate partner violence, gender-based violence, family violence. It can encompass a lot of things, including human trafficking, elder abuse, child abuse, whatever the issue is, whatever your gender is, if you need to escape your living situation, we will come, pack up your belongings, put them in storage for free, for however long it takes to find your housing. After, you know, two years of COVID and now working from home, I'm used to empty rooms. It's okay. So, if we can have the next slide? So, I am the chapter director of Shelter Movers Ottawa. And our agency provides free moving and storage services to people who are fleeing abuse, whether that is intimate partner violence, gender-based violence, family violence. It can encompass a lot of things, including human trafficking, elder abuse, child abuse. Whatever the issue is, whatever your gender is, if you need to escape your living situation, we will come, pack up your belongings, put them in storage for free for however long it takes to find your housing, and then go back, pack it back up, put it in your new house, arrange your furniture, rebuild it the way you need, and then we'll leave you alone. So, those are our, that's our services. Next slide. Recently, over the last two years, we've been moving into rural communities from Ottawa. We used to have about an hour's reach, but now we're as far as the end of Leeds-Grenville. We're also moving towards Quebec. We're trying to close the gap between Toronto and Montreal and Ottawa. Next slide. We know this is a huge problem in Canada, especially intimate partner violence. A woman is murdered in this country every two and a half days, usually by someone she loves. And we know that in urban centers, it's one problem, but in rural centers, it's a whole different animal. Next slide. So, when you're looking at outline communities or rural communities, however Smith Falls wants to identify... I grew up in the far north. To me, rural means you don't have a McDonald's. So, when I moved here and they were like, "Smith Falls is rural." I'm like, "No, there's paved roads here. There's no way this is rural." But here, we know that there's more likely to be firearms in the homes. We know that there's a general lack of privacy and ability to flee. And we know that intimate partner violence is 75% higher in small communities than it is in urban communities. So, when they did the Renfrew Inquiry, which you probably are very well familiar with, there were some really disturbing numbers in that. And we're trying to prevent those types of things from happening again. Next slide. So, there's lots of barriers that we're trying to combat when it comes to exiting. We know there are emotional barriers. We know that there are financial barriers. If you have to come up with first month, last month, insurance, and a moving truck and all of those types of things, especially because a lot of intimate partner violence involves financial abuse and theft. I've had many clients over the years. I've worked in shelters for about 20 years now. I've had clients have partners take out second mortgages without telling them, and all of a sudden, they're $750,000 in debt. Try to get an apartment now, right? We know that there's a housing shortage in this country. I don't know the, I don't know the Smith Falls numbers. I'm more of an Ottawa numbers person. But if they're anything like our numbers, it's hard to find housing. It's expensive to find housing. And we also know that the sixth month period following a breakup is usually the highest likelihood of a murder occurring. So, we try to remove any reason for people to have to go back to their homes, which is like, we're not going to give you your lease. So, you can't get new housing. You can't get supported housing. We're going to make sure that you don't have the kids passports. We're going to make sure that you don't get to leave the community because both parents need access to the children and they're schooling. All of these types of barriers. But shelter movers can go in and kind of eliminate the financial barrier and some of the safety barriers. We can't do everything for everybody, unfortunately. Next slide. But, right now in Ottawa, so when I say Ottawa, I mean the Ottawa area, which includes Leeds-Grenville, Gatineau, all of our rural partners. We do about 22 moves a month right now. One per week in rural areas, including Smith Falls. We are here already. We're working with partners in your town. We've done 1,300 moves since 2018, when we opened in Ottawa. And we coordinate with security personnel. We love Jody at the police station. She's fantastic. Thank you. We work with, of course, the police, the OPP. We work with language interpreters, pet fostering, whatever we have to do to make sure that people can get out and have their needs met. Next slide. So, we do three types of moves. We do urgent exit moves, which is typically when someone's still residing in the home. The likelihood of murder is very high. So, those ones go to the top of our priority list. And then we have escorted moves, which are, the person has been living in a safe place, and they have to go back to their home to collect things. So, we had a woman come to us. She had already left. She was in a shelter. And all she wanted was her kid's hockey equipment. That was it. All she wanted. So, we went back and we got everything, but she was really happy to have that hockey equipment. And then we have our happy days, which are resettlement moves. So, we'll come, usually they're in a shelter, we'll go and load their forever home for them. And after 20 years working in shelters, those are my happiest days. Because usually I see them on their worst days. Those days are some of the better ones. Some of them are a little overwhelming, but it's really happy when you see a kid running around going, "What about the Christmas tree here? And I'm going to paint my room, and Spider-Man's going to be on the wall." And I really like those days. Sorry. Anyway, next slide. So, there is a process. They have to be referred from a community group. So, if you have any caseworkers in your offices who are dealing with social work services, we'll take your referral. If you've got community centers, social workers, police officers, nurses, teachers, anybody who's in the community will take a referral from. We're not that fussy. Then the client will meet with an intake coordinator over the phone if it's safe. If it's not safe, it may be arranged through a caseworker in the case where their phone calls are being monitored or they're being geolocated or things like that that can happen. We'll figure out the safety issues. Are there guns in the house? Are there gang affiliations? Are they likely to follow you to the next location? Those types of things. And then we coordinate a team of volunteers, and then we have the move. Some days, we do need security or police, but we'll get into that in a minute. Next slide. And then we have community partners everywhere we go, including in Smith Falls. So, we work with emergency shelters, interval houses, transition homes, second-stage housing, physicians, police, social workers, absolutely anybody who wants to work with us, we want to work with them too. Next slide. And we are completely volunteer-powered. Right now, I have 177 registered active volunteers. We're always looking for more. Especially in rural areas, it's a lot harder to recruit volunteers in small towns just because everybody knows everything and nobody wants to get involved. So, it's a struggle, but we're doing it. We are recruiting constantly. And then there is specialized training that all of our volunteers go through so they are trauma-informed and they know what they're getting into and how to handle it. Next slide. Most of our clients are women. About 95% of them are women. Most of them have children under the age of eight. We will help anybody, like I said earlier. It's just men don't report in the same way. They just, we know men are being hurt. We just, they're not coming to us. So, if you know of men who are being harmed, we'll take them as well. Next slide. These are our main things that we pay for. It's the normal things. We try to get as much donations from the community as possible in terms of corporate sponsorship for storage space, or trucks, or moving supplies. The 3M factory has been very generous in terms of tape and boxes and things like that. So, if you have anybody in your pocket where you're like, "Hey, my buddy Bill's got this warehouse. He's not using it, and he needs a tax write-off. Give me a shout. I can put it to use." Next slide. Same thing. It's our in-kind donors. Those are our big players in the community. But if you know of anybody else who would like to lend a hand, please let me know. Next slide. So, the police services. It's very odd for a gender-based violence organization to partner with police. Historically, we don't get along. Oil and water, the police and domestic violence. However, we're finding that's changing. Jody has been overwhelmingly welcoming, and your officers have been showing up for us in a big way. And we would like to thank you for making sure that that continues to happen. The one thing we're finding, though, is that due to police budgets, they often don't have community liaison officers or neighborhood safety officers. So, often we'll call and say, "Hey, there's a gun in this house. We need somebody there in a uniform to make sure, like, this person has charges. We don't want to get anybody in more trouble. Just come and keep the peace," kind of thing, which they're more than willing to do. Every officer I've talked to has been thrilled to be a part of these moves. However, they do get called away on other duties, and then we have to end the move, which can be a huge problem for people escaping violence because that tips off the abuser that they're leaving when half their stuff is gone. And so, when you're writing your budget, you may want to remember me in those moments and go, "Hey, wouldn't it be great if we had money for overtime for officers just for two or three hours a month to go on these moves?" I don't know if it's possible for your budget. That's entirely up to you. But we're very grateful for every minute that the police have given us so far. Next slide. And that's pretty much it. We are a very basic service, but we think we're very needed. The rates of violence and femicide right now are epidemic. I think you guys have declared the epidemic here. So, we're grateful that you guys have that awareness. But we're just asking to keep us in mind, if something goes wrong in your offices, we're here to help. So, please refer to us if you can. And if you know of anybody who would like to get involved with fighting intimate partner violence, family violence, or ending it entirely, if possible, please contact me.
Thank you.
And if you have any questions.
Thank you so much, Ray. Questions, comments? Counselor Miller?
Thank you. Thanks for all you do, Ray.
Thank you for having me.
And thanks for your presentation today. And yes, we did declare intimate partner violence an epidemic. We were one of the first communities in Atlantic County to do that. And it was a small thing to do, but I think it made a big statement. I'm really proud to do it on my part. I'm involved in the not-for-profit sector, and so I'm just, I know it's not all about the moving costs.
It's not.
How do you fund your operational work?
Right now, for the Ottawa office, we get $70,000 a year from the city of Ottawa. And we have $40,000 a year for the rural expansion program from one particular donor who has an interest in rural and outline communities. The rest we fundraise and I beg for. So, I strap on my kneepads and I go, "Please, let me have the money."
Yes, of course.
So, I understand that. What I would also suggest that you keep in mind is we do have a community grants program. I think it's going to be updated again this year, but it should be coming up the next few months where you can watch for application processes.
Awesome. Yes, I would be applying too. The one question I guess I would have, I don't know if you know the answer, is will they support an organization that is not, the main office isn't in Smith Falls?
That's a good question. I would put that to staff. See you tomorrow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good question. So, the intent is to keep the money local and if we require some of that. But we should have a conversation around that because ultimately, it's meant to benefit the people of Smith Falls. So, I think that would be a discussion.
We can definitely earmark the money for Smith Falls moves. We just have to figure out how to make it sound like we're ensuring that to have, you know.
Ray, Mayor Pankow?
Yeah, thanks, Ray. And I first became familiar with Shelter Movers, three years, three years ago roughly, with the Soup Share event in Carle Place.
Yes.
So, I participated three years, and it was sort of fascinating subject because I wasn't aware of what you were doing prior to that. Obviously, a vital service. And without it, I think there would be primarily women and children who are in situations where they simply can't get out because of that barrier. And you've done such an incredible job of lowering those barriers. And I appreciate how shameless you are with your begging.
We can't be choosers.
It just shows your undying commitment. We know that IPD cases are up significantly here since the pandemic. I think over 40%. And I'm really pleased to hear with our active police chief, as well as our police service being so involved, I chair the police service board. So, I will take back your request, your comment. And maybe it's a matter of some understanding of maybe how the paid duty works and if it's the officers who may be not on duty when they would, yeah, be paid to come in and help in a situation because I'm sure it makes things very awkward if you need police on site and they get called off to something which is more important at the time.
Yeah.
But it leaves the rest of you fairly vulnerable at the time in an awkward situation. So, that I will take back, and we'll have a discussion on that. And I don't know how we would quantify what the need would be. I don't, if maybe...
I can, I can bring you, or I guess I can't bring you. I can send you staffs on how often we're called to Smith Falls in particular.
Yes.
But we also hope to grow that number. So, but we can't really, it's, we're out of stalemate because we don't want to drain your police services and not be able to do the moves.
Yeah. So, I guess, yeah, circle back to me on that, please.
Absolutely.
It's an idea we can discuss come budget with police services board before it comes back to council for final approval. And as to the community, our community grants program, I think it's actually a little bit in flux. We're looking at making some changes to it for 2025. So, perhaps it's an opportunity for that conversation to understand you benefiting our community in incredibly positive ways. So, thanks for your presentation.
Thank you for having me, and happy Pride.
Thank you.
Do you have any more?
Anybody else? Thank you, Ray, and it's important to get that out there, so good information. Thank you. Thank you. So, I understand that we have a few directors' reports and maybe a CAO report as well. So, I'll turn to CAO Morris to lead us through that.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. We have four in total, and I'm sure they'll be brief. So, we'll start with Carl, since he's proposed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Three quick updates from Development Services this evening. Firstly, providing a quick update on a legislative change regarding heritage. A couple of weeks ago, council adopted a resolution supporting the position taken by the town of Fort Erie and various other municipalities that we need more time than the two years the province allotted in order to properly make decisions on properties that have been listed but not designated on our heritage register. So, and that's given resource and capacity challenges in heritage departments province-wide. The resolution requested an additional five years. On May 27th, the province introduced Bill 200, which received royal assent last week. So, it was quite fast, and it did a couple of things. One of which was extend the deadline to January 1st, 2027. So, that's an additional two years, not the five that was requested, but two more than were there. So, there are a total of 32 properties that are on the heritage properties of interest list. And about a dozen of those are outside the area that's being looked at through the Heritage Conservation District. So, the Municipal Heritage Committee will take this information and provide a report and advice to council later on as to which properties to prioritize to protect and protect our heritage resources. Second update, also quickly, on municipal heritage. Planning staff and their consultants at StanTech held the first of two public information sessions regarding the proposed Heritage Conservation District study on May 30th. In addition to the website and social media, we sent the notices to all roughly 230 property owners in the downtown core in the study area and notified the DBA. The purpose of that information session was to simply introduce the project to the community and get the community's input on what's important to them in the downtown core. Are there view sheds, are there particular blocks or buildings or landscapes or features that are especially meaningful to the public that may not be immediately apparent to the consultants doing the project until they talk to, talk to the community? We only had about a dozen members of the public attend the open format session. That's not a huge number, but it did really allow for some very meaningful and in-depth conversations, which were some very focused engagement, which I found to be helpful. We anticipate the next session in the fall may attract a bit more interest since at that point, there will be more concrete proposals in terms of a potential regulatory approach. But certainly, I appreciate the work of StanTech and staff in the, in the planning division for putting that together. Thirdly, on behalf of the town, I attended the Rita Valley Conservation Authority's municipal consultation session this past Friday in Perth. There have been a few changes to RBCA's regulatory scope over the last few years. Firstly, as of last year and a half, Conservation Authorities have seen their programs and services focused into what are called core functions. And that means that they, the range of things they can advise us on or provide planning comment on are smaller and limited to things like natural hazards such as flooding and a few other things, source water protection as one example. They can no longer provide formal comment on natural heritage such as ecology or water quality, which means future planning applications where these matters come into play, we would need to farm out to other consultants, third-party consultants, if we need that advice to inform council's decision. RBCA has kindly offered to help us develop, scope our own checklist to determine when and where we look for environmental impact studies. Another big change came through Regulation 4124 that came into effect on April 1st of this year and replaced individual Conservation Authority regulations that used to apply to each individual watershed. And that's replaced with a single, a single province-wide approach to attempt to create a more standardized framework. In a practical standpoint, RBCA's regulatory area has been reduced from 120 meters around a provincially significant wetland to only 30, which means that fewer lands would fall under their jurisdiction for review and permits around our wetlands. However, or at least around our provincially significant wetlands, which in Smith Falls is that area around the swale wetland on the west end of town. However, the permitting authority now extends to all identified wetlands and not just provincially significant wetlands that now apply. So in Smith Falls, that means there's actually a few new areas in the southern part of our town that would be regulated by RBCA as local wetlands, non-provincially significant wetlands that presently aren't regulated. RBCA will be hosting a public consultation, overviewing their draft development policies and wetland mapping at the Perth Civitan on June 20th, with two later sessions in the city of Ottawa. And we certainly encourage anyone to take a look at, take a look at that and reach out to us if they have any questions. The session also identified ways in which RBCA can assist municipalities in their own planning and programming, such as tree canopy expansion, evaluating natural heritage features through asset management, and exploring things like low-impact development. Our current official plan and zoning bylaw contains several sections related to natural heritage where RBCA review and collaboration is specifically prescribed. So the new official plan policy will of course need to align with the current legislative practice, but also explore other areas where we can take a lead role in terms of environmental planning. That concludes my, my update this evening.
Thank you, Carl. Any questions or comments for Carl? Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Carl, you used the word "view shed." Is that the word you used or did I mishear? That's a new term for me. Could you just help me understand that?
So a view, a view shed as an example, if, and we're, Smith Falls, in Smith Falls, we're fortunate to have a few, a few grade changes. So if you're looking down Bequah Street or looking down Market Street, you have typically either a clear view towards the Rito or to some building that's in front of the Rito. So a view shed is, is an approach that looks at those, looks at those views. Is that something that you'd be looking to protect? Is there any particular feature that if somebody's standing on the top of Bequah, what is it that you want to see down there? And sort of on a much more granular example, coming from, I did my planning school in Halifax. And we look, if you stand on the top of the Citadel Hill, the city had identified certain view sheds from there that were protective. One was a view of an island in the harbor and a few other, a few other pieces. So they'd undertaken a whole planning exercise regarding view sheds that were identified as significant and prescribed ways in which those can be conserved through planning.
Oh, thank you.
The word of the day. Okay, thanks, Carl. Thanks for that. And next?
Next, we have Stephanie. Gives a view or?
Might be a first, but I might take longer than Carl. So just a few updates. First is on the library. The project remains on budget, still early days, but it's on budget. We are slightly behind schedule. The interior demolition has commenced. And we had to manage some hazardous materials needed to be tested. And we did some retesting. And a number of the updates, or sorry, a number of updates to the drawings have been required based on what we found after we opened up the walls, but nothing catastrophic. So we should be, everyone's confident that we're in good clip with that. We are getting three new flagpoles. They are five weeks out. We've ordered them. It is for Town Hall. They'll be clustered to the left of the main entrance. And they'll hide, hopefully, the air conditioner as well. So dual purpose. And of course, we'll be removing the two that are causing us issue in the front. We installed our swimming barricades today. And so this was a response to a number of complaints we received last year with an increase in boat traffic adjacent to the swimming area. So we were able to secure some barricades and those went in today. I haven't seen them yet, but I will take a look on my way home. Regarding the seniors facilities, so our staff continue to work with the Harmony Seniors Club to help them address some of the issues they brought forth to this, this audience previously. So per the M.O.U. that you guys approved last year, we have a negotiation around an annual wish list for capital repairs, items, update, things that they would like to see us address. So while we enter the budgeting process for next year, we're going to be having those conversations with the, the membership. And so we're also working with the group, Trevor in particular, Trevor Castle, our operations supervisor, has been working to find efficiencies in utilities, in the use of utilities. So getting some cost savings, but also further comfort to maximize comfort in the building. One of the primary concerns brought forth was the physical limitation of space. There is a finite, obviously, a building is a finite space. And so as you're aware, there's no current plan to build a new facility. However, my next item on the agenda is the youth arena feasibility study, which will hopefully inform a bit of what we want to do with the multi-use indoor space. And so our terms of, terms of long-range planning, we're considering that. Our favorite topic is geese. And so someone called them cobra chickens the other day, and I thought that was very apt as it was hissing at me in the park. So we have reports that our geese mitigation tactics are working. We have no nests on any of our parkland and no eggs. That does not mean they do not travel. So they are living in Parks Canada's geese lot upstream, and they're coming down into Murphy Park and Centennial Park area. So unfortunately, we don't have passport control for them. But we are trying to do some of the other standard mitigation stuff. So we're going to be putting a tripwire back up for them. Hopefully that'll work. One of the major concerns though is people are feeding them, which is encouraging them to come down to that area. So I would just request people do not feed the geese. It's not good for them. They're not humans. They're not supposed to eat human food. They're perfectly viable themselves in other places, but it does encourage them to come to our park. And that is the area, general area where we're finding people are feeding them is in the Murphy Park area. So I would just request respectfully that we put that messaging out there. The department also recently hosted a tree giveaway and we were able to push approximately a thousand trees, little saplings, into the community. And we also, the leftover ones, we've been putting into the ground on our space. So we've put some down near the arena. We're putting them down in some of the boulevards that we mow and into our parkland. So that's about an additional two hundred seedlings. We'd like to give another several hundred trees away this fall. We've been working with the RBCA. They didn't have any trees for us available in the spring, but we'd like to do another giveaway this fall as part of the ongoing tree canopy development, which Carl and myself and Paul have been talking about in terms of understanding what the tree canopy looks like, how we can actually measure the five percent development per over year. So that's exciting. I like trees. Our healing circle project is underway. If you've driven by and taken a look, you'll see these brightly colored logs. It's looking really good. We did have a bit of a washout with some of our pea gravel based on the rain, but, so we're a little bit behind, but we are on track to get it done ahead of National Indigenous Peoples' Day, which is the end of this month. And so we'd like to do some sort of dedication that we'll be working on as well. So that's exciting because that's been, I think, a holdover project that was an idea from a few years back. And we've done a number of smaller but important projects over at the Heritage House. So we've had some minor repairs to the foundation, which has stopped the water flowing in, which is kind of important. The installation of a new walkway, which is much safer and much more aesthetically pleasing. And we're working on getting a tender out for a roof repair as well as some other things. And finally, the ice is out for the season. So it's either the best time of year or the worst time of year, depending on if you're into hockey. And our parks are now in full swing. So we have a very long list of projects that we're undertaking this year. And so for example, we're clocking in about two hundred hours each week of mowing because we have a lot of parkland. So if you see our guys out there, I think they're excited to be there. So that's what they tell me anyway. And that's my update.
Thank you. Counselor Robinson has a question.
Yeah.
Thanks, Stephanie. It's just on the waterfront aspect. I noticed the other day that we're now down to just two ladders, not two and a half. And it looked to me like there might be a piece of the one that got totally ripped off, maybe sticking up. My concern, my concern would be if a kid gets caught on that or something, we're going to get in trouble.
Okay.
So it could be just my eyesight, but it looked to me from the shore.
Fair enough.
I wasn't going to swim in the fun game.
Noted. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you. I know you have interested members of the audience for that report. So thank you. Next?
Next up, we have Paul McManus.
Thanks, Malcolm. And good evening, members of council. Just a couple of updates on some of the notable capital projects we're working on in Public Works and Utilities, being the Water Tower, George Street Reconstruction Project, and the wrap-up of Catherine Street Reconstruction Project. So Water Tower Site, myself and E.V.B. have had a couple, three meetings so far to date, kind of pre-construction meetings with the, with Landmark Structures, Inc. over the last number of weeks. And I would like to say just for people at home and for council that construction start is imminent. The, one of their subcontractors is going to do the civil site work, was actually mobilized to site today. I was around site at around 2:00 P.M. this afternoon to meet Landmark Superintendent, and they hadn't yet mobilized the site. So not sure if they got pushed off from rain last week, their subcontractor. But with, with that, the, I just wanted to note that it is imminent. It will be starting here hopefully this week. And we'll start to get shovels and some iron into the ground and start some of that site work. George Street Reconstruction, I'm sure everybody's aware that that's in full force reconstruction right now. About three quarters of the work's been completed down at the intersection of Strathcona and George. I will note that intersections can be particularly difficult as we experienced with Bequah Street. We know how long it takes to get everything all organized and structures in the ground and pipes connected. And in my experience, they are probably the most challenging of any road reconstruction with linear infrastructure upgrades. So about three quarters of the way down, down at Strathcona, and then the underground work between Main and William is about a third to halfway completed, moving north up the street. Catherine Street, as we're aware, the brunt of the work there was completed in 2023, last year. We got as far as completing concrete work, placing topsoil in people's front lawns, paving driveways. Base course asphalt was completed. And then we had to pull up just because it was getting late in the season and we don't want to lay saw it in November and December and certainly don't want to be paving that time of year. So the decision was made to defer the balance of works till, till this year. Top lift of asphalt was completed last week. If anybody's drove around there, it looks really, really good. So I'm pleased with that. Really, the only thing that's needs to be completed over there is there's some outstanding saw that needs to be completed. There isn't much. There's a little bit. And there is some deficiencies with some residential driveways that need to be corrected over there as well. So the contractor, Campbell's Trucking, they're aware of the work that needs to be completed. And I was talking with our, one of our civil, civil techs this afternoon, Samantha Turner, and she's advised that probably in the next couple of weeks, things will be buttoned up over there. So we can close out that project and concentrate on George Street. Happy to take any questions?
Any questions? Counselor Robinson?
More of a comment. You say they're about two-thirds done on the intersection of Strathcona and George. They can slow that down a little bit if they want because I like the idea of no traffic on these streets. But I was absolutely amazed at how far down they were, they had to go and put those huge cement.
Structures.
Yeah, like, wow, that's a long way down.
It is.
I asked a guy if he was looking for something in particular. He says he had his metal detector, but it saw gold down there.
Right. And I'm just, just on that, that note, projects such as this, particularly in, in Smith Falls, in my experience in Brockville as well, we're in the Canadian Shield. So there's lots of rock. It does take time. I'm happy to hear that residents in the community, plus people that live in the area, are patient with us. It's a noisy process. It's dusty. But it is, it is. In order to progress the work up the street, it has to be done. One other thing I should have noted earlier is we've been seeing quite a bit of a presence of pedestrians trying to make their way from the north down through George Street to make their way down to the park. You know, kids swim down there and whatnot in the park. And it's, and it's a great place to frequent and visit. I would encourage those that are walking in particular, that they use an alternate route to go around. Perhaps they can go down James Street as opposed to walking through the construction zone. It's, construction zones can be dangerous. There's lots of moving equipment. Our contractor does have people staged there, workers, just to keep watch of, particularly for people that are walking through the site, just to redirect them and to an adjacent street being James Street to make their way down to the park. So for those at home, if they hear that, we'd appreciate to try to keep as many people out of the construction site as possible.
Sounds good. Any other questions? Nope. Lots going on. Thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you.
Lastly, before I get into mine, I just want to commend all of his team. Those three projects are in excess, have a value in excess of fifteen million dollars, and they're all happening simultaneously. That is a remarkable achievement. He also has an operation amount. So hats off to all of his team. Pretty great work. My update's really brief. Council will recall the recent discussion with the fact there at hand. So I'm pleased to report that tomorrow morning we'll be launching the outreach with a survey and some information on the website. So we've given members of the community from June 24th to chime in with five or six simple questions, a place for direct comments. So I would refer anyone out there, resident or business in Smith Falls, to go to the website and complete the very brief survey. Once it closes, we'll bring, we'll bring it back weekly in July for further discussion.
So if you're out there, get cracking. Sorry.
A cucumber chicken, all right.
Okay. Couldn't resist. We have no committee of consent reports. We have no in-camera. We have four priority issues. The first one would be the award of tender for the youth arena feasibility study with Director Clark.
Lou again. So my thanks to Paul Dover for bringing this while I was away. I was in France. I'm sorry. I didn't care. But now I'm back and focused. So we are looking to, I'm seeking approval for the youth arena feasibility study award. I believe there were some questions that came up around the scope of the feasibility study as well as the scoring of the matrix. So we did receive two, we received two responses to the bid call. And one of them was scored and did not meet the technical requirements. It was scored well below. So we would like to go with New Stadium Recreation. We were very satisfied. They had a very comprehensive response to the call. So the unfortunate piece is that they are slightly over budget with Nat HST. In terms of the scope, the, the purpose of a feasibility study is to, as one would suggest, or as the name would suggest, to understand the feasibility of carrying forward with whatever path makes the most sense. Youth Arena is an older facility. We are faced with a significant amount of investment potentially if we'd like to maintain the status quo. That may be the best option. I'm not sure. We're trying to figure that out. And so it is, the plant is at or near or beyond the end of life. We're facing requirement to very quickly replace the floor, replace the dashboard boards, replace everything else. And of course, we get ongoing comments about the size of the change rooms, the heat and where the coldness in the facility, and a number of other things. The building is ancient, as it were. So in terms of facilities, it may not be the best thing to move forward with. That said, we don't know. So the feasibility study will hopefully tell us what is the highest and best use of this facility, of this space, of this potential opportunity. Maybe it's a new facility. Maybe it's not. Maybe it's a retrofit. That's what we're looking for. And so we believe that New Stadium Recreation can give us this option. It is over budget by one thousand three hundred and thirty-six dollars and seventy-seven cents because HST is quite pricey. So, any questions?
Thank you. Questions, comments? Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks, Stephanie. I'm supporting your recommendation. I did have a couple of questions. If you could. One, don't refer to that building as ancient because I remember when it was built.
In a facility sense.
Yes. And secondly, how does the, this feasibility study tie with your Parks and Rec Master Plan? Is there synergy? Is there, what happens there?
So through the chair, yes, there is. The Parks and Rec Master Plan doesn't specifically say we need to do a feasibility study. What it does say is monitor the use of the second pad. I understand the Rec Master Plan is before my time, but I understand use was struggling at that time in terms of the second pad. That, I think, is a result of COVID and we have a different reality now when both, both arenas are full. What it will allow us to do in terms of the, the connection to the Rec Master Plan is understand better potentially a multi-use facility. The, the Master Plan does not suggest that we have a single-use facility indoor built. It's not suggesting we have a purpose-built arena or a purpose-built sport court or something. It's looking at multi-use facilities. This may play into that. It may not, but it may play into that.
And finally, so right now, if I was a really avid pickleball fan, when we get into this feasibility and there's opportunities to comment, that's a really good time to step up and talk about your needs or no?
So through the chair, what I would say, this is focused on the arena specifically. If, if at such time the feasibility study result come back, comes back and says you need to actually move away from a single pad, you need to move towards a multi-use facility, you need to do something different, that's when we would open up that conversation. This will just give us direction of, are we putting in the money to fix the building as is? Or do we need to look at something different? And what would that be? So there will be an opportunity for people though to provide comment. And so we would negotiate that because I want to make sure that we, we have the community involved. And so at such time, it might be wise for some folks to come and say, we don't need an ice pad simply. We need more than that.
Okay.
So short answer, yes.
Thanks.
Mayor Pankow, do you have anything?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Director Clark. First off, what's the timeline for completion of this feasibility study?
And before the end of year.
End of year?
Yeah. Yeah.
Sorry, fall. Okay. And I can't recall from budget, are we looking at any significant capital upgrades or requirements for the youth arena in this calendar year?
So through the chair, yes, we have a new header, which is part of the refrigeration system. We have not pursued that just yet, because we wanted to go down this avenue first, so we want to make sure that if we're investing any money, then it makes most sense. We will get to a point where, I think early on, we'll tell from the feasibility study if it makes sense to move forward in the immediate term with a new header, but we need to make sure that if the call is made, then we need to do it fairly soon, in the next couple of months.
And as a follow-up, this information we already have, I guess, or will they be doing the assessment on the condition of the equipment, or is that the difference?
So through the chair, we can provide them information on the dates and the serial numbers, and they'll look at that, and we'll incorporate it into the replacement cost.
But they won't look at the actual physical condition and expected, like remaining life expectancy of those assets? Or is it going by the age of?
It would be going by the age of it. And realistically, we are actually at end of life for most of the plant itself.
Yes.
Yeah.
So is there, I guess, the bigger question would be, are we at risk of seeing failure before next ice season? Or is there a risk of having one ice pad next season instead of two? Do we know that at this stage?
Is there wood I can knock on? I mean, we're always at risk of catastrophic failure, it's a facility, and things happen. So that being said, we do have an excellent team that does really good maintenance. What we're spending money on is maintenance and putting our fingers in the holes, not actually, but proverbially. And so we're spending a significant amount of money on that at this point, in terms of the operation of it. It's not as efficient as it could be, and we are at risk of catastrophic failure, where we could lose the pad. But at the same time, I think we take enough steps to make sure we mitigate that risk as best as possible. I can't, in all good conscience, stand here and say that's not going to happen next year, but I mean, we also have difficulties with brand-new facilities as well. So, you know, I think the longer we push it, the more challenges we certainly will encounter.
Well, I'm grateful for the proactive move, but I think, I guess we have to hope we have some answers, we have some solutions, and we have implementation, which may be a few years, two or three years out before we would end up having the risk of any major failure, but I guess a big step in that direction, thank you.
Counselor Robinson?
I just had a comment, I'm going to support your recommendation. Thank you. Excuse me. Yeah, I supported it as well, and my memory is failing me, but it seems to me when we did the Rec and Master Plan, and it was by Zoom, but the consultant was talking about this facility and the plant, and then he talked about usage and that sort of thing, and I know that, I understand that it's used a lot in the wintertime. So, but I think that we have to go down this road first, and because, as I said before, or I said it to someone, if you don't own a pair of skates, then in the wintertime, there's not a lot of indoor facilities in town. So they'll have to make a case for it, and we should get going sooner rather than later. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And you're still there?
Nope.
No, it's Carol.
Okay.
Sorry. Heritage Act Authorization 25, on the low.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is bringing forward an update to committee following the discussion regarding the Heritage Act alteration authorization for the demolition of the former water treatment plant. So as council will recall, before, in order, before a demolition permit can be issued for the water treatment plant and authorization under the Heritage Act is forms part of applicable law, which needs to be satisfied through a resolution of council. So this was, in this case, the demolition permit process awaits, of course, finalizing the negotiations between, through our insurance and a potential bidder, however, staff are attempting to align all of the pieces to guide that process forward. Council had previously considered a resolution similar to what was adopted by the municipal heritage committee outlining a number of recommended conditions that are intended to essentially enshrine and support the recognition and commemoration of the most, of the most significant features that we have there. And then council, one of the conditions that was recommended by MHC related to salvaging materials, masonry, anything that we could, and council was looking for a little bit more clarification in terms of which materials should be prioritized for salvage. The municipal heritage committee considered that request and carefully reviewed the designation bylaw that we have in effect for the property, and they identified a number of, a number of features in each of the four buildings that the committee feels are either practical or desirable for salvage. We recognize, of course, that perhaps not all of these materials can feasibly or cost-effectively be salvaged, however, the committee wanted, wished to convey their intent to identify and support us undertaking whatever efforts are possible to do so. So based on that, and based on the municipal heritage committee's previous resolution, staff are proposing a, that should council direct the authorization for the demolition of the four buildings constituting the water treatment plant, that that be enshrined in a resolution and a series of conditions outlined in the staff report. And I'll pause there.
Thank you for that. Comments? Counselor Miller?
I have two questions.
Two questions or comments?
Questions and then a comment? Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Manager Greinke, and please pass on my thanks to the heritage committee for their work on this. Can you clarify who would be doing the photography and documentation? Is that our staff? Is that the heritage committee?
The expectation as the property owner is that it would be, it would be our staff who would lead that, potentially with the guidance and assistance of the municipal heritage committee.
And what would the timeline look like to get this work done, demolition to happen?
I would defer to Director Clark as it relates to, as it relates to the timeline.
So in terms of the timeline, at this point, a contractor has not yet been selected, so they're still working through processors, another bid that was provided, and the intact public entity has actually solicited an additional bid, so we have a call scheduled later this week, so we should have an update. It's my hope that we have some sort of selection very quickly, because we'd like to get moving.
Thank you.
Why not?
Comment?
And the comment is that I support the recommendation.
Thank you. Mayor Pecos?
Thank you. Thanks, Carol. The MHC didn't have any, it's not a discussion, but just no decision to retain any of the brick of the, either the sixth or the older, or the newer portions?
So through, Mr. Chair, yes, there is certainly the facade stone in Building One, the limestone building was identified, and then certain, I'm seeing certain features on the remain, certain features and sort of heritage attributes on the remainder. I think, I would read that to suggest that, not that the municipal heritage committee wasn't interested, I think that they would, without speaking for them, I'm sure they would, they would be appreciative if we're able to salvage the bulk of the brick and stone across any of the buildings, but their resolution wished to identify the most specific features identified in the designation bylaws. Certainly, council's resolution can expand the scope to include any brick or masonry that's desirable or feasible for salvage as well, and convey that intent to our contractor.
Okay, so I guess to open the discussion up, I think, obviously, it'd be a shame to see all of this brick being essentially thrown into landfill. Also recognizing, there's probably hundreds of homes in our community that would have a very similar brick, and bricks deteriorate, the opportunity to go somewhere and a brick that matches what you have. We'll get one over here. I think it would make sense, I'm not, maybe it's not suggesting we recover all the brick, but I don't know, a certain number of pallets or whatever, because I think if real be willing to sort of host these on-site, I think it'd just be a great resource for our community and rather than throw them in the landfill, to have them preserved and reused at some point in time in the future for when we may need them. Maybe a little of a fundraiser for real as well, if the committee agrees with that. Aside from that, I mentioned where I support the recommendation, which I guess reluctantly, we prefer to see this preservation here, but we don't, the reality be phased, so I will support that.
Thank you, and I do as well, and I think that we don't, we don't know what the demolition's going to cost, because the brick is, it will cost to keep the same brick, but I think it was nominal from the get-go, and I'll turn to CEO.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So typically, in an insurance claim of this nature, the insurance company would own any of the salvage, salvageable material. But I think through discussions around this table, the clear expectation is that certain elements would be retained by the town. So those are the discussions we're having with our broker and the insurance company. So I think if there was an interest in saving more than the architectural elements that the MHC has identified, I would suggest a friendly amendment. Well, procedurally, we're not amending the MHC recommendation, but we just need direction from council to preserve as much as practical would be a term that we suggested.
I can agree with that, and I think even of our own asset, and what we talked about earlier, our station theater.
Yeah.
Like both at the same time, very similar bricks.
So we can, we can support this motion and then just give staff direction for the other brick. So is everyone okay with that? Yeah, Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I'm not okay with that. I think it's a step back to where we were, we're going to try and save everything, and I can just see those, the rubble, and so I really appreciated the specificity that the heritage committee put into this, and I'd like to stick with that, so I'm not supportive of trying to save every brick and stone nearby. So that's just me.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if the intention was, the mayor's intention was every brick, he mentioned a few pallets, that sort of thing.
Yeah, it would be practically relatively simple. I, yeah, I'm sure there would be probably a hundred pallets if we had them all. I guess it's a matter of recovering some, that we can gradually, we're willing to have the staff to figure out.
Okay, well, that could, go ahead.
So we can incorporate the intent of that statement in the resolution that comes forward at this point.
Okay.
If there's a counter.
Some?
Yeah.
Not all, some.
Practical.
As practical.
We can be a little bit brave.
Okay, we're okay? Okay, Counselor Robinson?
Yeah, I'll support the recommendation with, you know, some of the.
Yeah. Okay. So you've got direction on that?
I do, thank you.
And that'll come forward at the council meeting next week? Yes, okay, good. Thank you. And Director McMunn is next with the Water Tower Contract Administration Inspection Services Change Order Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, so the report I have in front of council this evening is with respect to contract admin and inspection services for the, we're talking about before, the construction of the water tower. So as we know, we've awarded the contract for detailed design to EVB Engineering, so that's obviously been completed. We issued the tender, we awarded the work to Landmark Structures, and the actual construction, as we talked about before, is imminent, hopefully starting this week. At this point, we don't have in-house resources, myself included, to administer a contract such as this. A neighboring municipality, Prescott, they're in the midst of commission, or finishing up their water tower, will be commissioned some point this year in 2024. EVB, they completed the detailed design, the tendering package, the contracted admin and inspection for that particular project on behalf of the municipality in Prescott. And it was always our intent, staff's intent, to not perform the contracted admin and inspection on this project, it's well outside of our wheelhouse, and it always was the intention to have EVB perform that work, so much that we actually included a caveat within the document when we went, excuse me, when we went out for detailed design, that the proponent could be asked down the road to provide these services, albeit they didn't price it at the time, but it was well-known that, to all proponents that were bidding the work, that the likelihood of that happening was high. So here we are today. So I did reach out to EVB some time ago, and they put a package together for contracted admin and inspection. I will note that they have hosted a number of pre-construction meetings to date that will kind of fall under this umbrella, if you will, in terms of their pricing. So my recommend, my suggestion to council is for, to pass a resolution to approve this change order to an offset limit of $126,239.39, inclusive of net HST, to perform the services that we just talked about, being contracted admin and inspection. So I did take a look at, obviously, at their proposal. I will note that they, they're not, you know, when we look at a George Street reconstruction, we've got in-house services with our, with our engineering techs. You know, we hired another engineering tech this year, that's their sole purpose, is they're doing full-time inspection out on this, out on that particular project, not dissimilar to the Catherine Street project, where we had our own in-house resources, performed construction inspection and contracted admin. This project's a little bit different, just because of the, you know, it's not putting linear pipe in the ground, it's, it takes time. Every section of column that they pour takes a couple of days. So there'll be certain milestones here at the project, when EVB will be called upon to come in to do inspection and sign off of certain stages within the project. They will facilitate reaching out to our, a sub-consultant to come in to do geotechnical work, i.e. concrete testing and other materials testing as well, so they'll facilitate that work. They'll issue, or they'll facilitate requests for information, ROI's, that come through from the, from Landmark, so they'll facilitate all of that. Any change orders that come up, which we don't expect there really to be any, to be quite honest, but again, it's construction, you never know, there is a potential for that to happen, but I think we do have a really good detailed design, and I think everything's been covered off. In so much that on page three of three, like I said, we, like when we first originally budgeted for this project and we applied for the ICIP greenstream funding, we didn't realize that this project was going to come in as high as it did. And as we know, when we closed the tender recently, we awarded works to, to Landmark Structures to the tune of about $9.6 million. So that eats up a lot of the $9.8 million that we had budgeted between 2023, 2024, and what we're expecting to budget in 2025. So within the tender document that we put out, that we awarded to Landmark, we did have a $100,000 contingency in there for things that come up throughout the project. So I'm suggesting that we draw upon that $100,000 for now, to cover some of that $126,000 cost for contracted admin and inspection. Leaves us with a slight deficit at this point, mathematical deficit, given the fact we're not going to complete this project till 2025, and we need to put money away in the 2025 capital budget, leaves us short about $14,000, or $14,500 at this point. So not huge dollars for a scope of a project such as this, but I just wanted to bring it to light to council that it does present a slight deficit at this point, if we are to draw upon that $100,000 contingency that was in the tender. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions through the chair.
Questions, comments? Counselor McKenna?
Thank you. I think it's an excellent idea, and I very supportive of it, it's a wise use of the money.
Thank you. Counselor Robinson?
I agree with Counselor McKenna in what was.
Thumbs up, thumbs up, and thumbs up. And I'll just mention that as we go forward with this water tower project, I just got back from FCM. with this water tower project, I just got back from FCM, Councilor Robinson was there, and Councilor Quinn, and they, I'll do, we'll do a report on, on what they're talking about, but this is right in their wheelhouse, about what municipalities are facing in terms of finance and this stuff. And more to come on that. But we'll do a resolution next council meeting, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. CEO Morris with Strategic Plan Monitoring Program, June 2024.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm delighted to present the second of a series of, by manual reports on this strategic plan. So council may recall, 11 months ago, you approved the strategic plan, it was through the council. There were six priorities within the plan, and 35 individual initiatives to support the six priorities. So I'm quite delighted to say that I believe we're on track with completing each of those initiatives. And I won't go through the report, but I would like to just breeze through the attachment and talk about specific projects. And would certainly encourage any questions that you might have as we go through them. I won't cover all three of five, we'll, we'll try and cover one in each bucket. So, starting with the transportation networks, we've got the, the active transportation plan, which was done a couple of years ago. There are a number of things that need to be actioned or implemented within that plan. Paul and his team are working on that now. They're developing an implementation plan. We're doing that in-house, so there will be no cost to do that. We'll have that in front of committee later this year, so that we can embed any of the costs that might be apparent in that plan and in the term of that. Next one is the review of roads and sidewalks. This is well underway. We have a great deal of data on the condition of roads and sidewalks. That's being collated and applied, a favorite condition index is being applied. So we'll have that, again, very in the twenty-four for council to look at. Confederation Bridge, obviously, that's moving along, and the tender documents are currently being prepared for a timber structure at the river crossing. So, next bucket is the housing one, very, very important one. I would like to just say the official plan is underway, which we've talked about at this table. So that's going to be a key policy document that's going to influence housing for the next 25 years. A couple of other ones, I would say that the Community Improvement Plan has several programs. I'll just remind you, there are 15 programs within the Community Improvement Plan. Several, four of those are related to housing, the town will house them. So you, council, open that up for applications. We could not get as many as we hoped for housing-specific projects this round, but the point is, you, the town has the policy framework and the funding program to assist the town with housing. There are projects in the works that I expect will apply to funding this program. So I would say that one is, is mature and has time as well. Move on to priority three, the waterfront and downtown. We've got some exciting stuff going on there. I mentioned the Community Improvement Plan, so you just recently awarded 12 projects, $100,000 in municipal funding. We expect that investment to be leveraged to in excess of $200,000, probably more in terms of total investment, and capacity, I believe, of that money. So most of those revolve around Programs one and two, so the accessibility improvements, side improvements, and Program 13, and other building renovations. So that program is virtually fully subscribed, and we've got a little bit of money left over for a fall update. So that one is a great uptake from the CIP program. The other one I would focus your attention on is the Center Street redevelopment or visioning for that area of town. So Julia's been working with a consultant. She expects to have a recommendation final report for you on the 24th of June later this month, that you can, you can learn what's happened in that project, and ask questions, and hopefully move that program forward. Moving on to infrastructure renewal, our fourth priority, we've got the asset management plan. Paul and his team are spending a significant amount of time getting that ready for your review. It's scheduled for the 22nd of July. So the consultant that's been helping us will present that to you, and that will check a box off in terms of our statutory obligations to have an asset management plan. More importantly, it's going to inform future budgets in a, in a much more focused way than we've had in the past. So that's going to be an important policy document. Next one, climate change or partnership with climate protection. We have a climate protection group. They're working diligently to identify milestones one and two within the action plan. All of that's going to lead to a climate action plan in Madison Falls. So I would say we've got really good resources working on that during important progress. We talked to the library, Stephanie talked to the library earlier, that's underway. Under business attraction, Julia and her team have been working on a VRG survey that closed in May. The results of the survey will inform an eventual business attraction plan that will be brought, and will be in front of you for year end. Dublin's moving along. I would go to the sixth priority. These are not in order of importance. They're simply numbered. Parks, trails, and recreation. Stephanie's been doing a lot of work on the five or six initiatives here. Certainly the developing green spaces, I'm really happy to announce that, or share with you, that we have a trailhead facility for the cat trail, a proper trailhead facility, that's being worked on collaboratively between Community Services and Public Works. The location, as we talked about before, is the road allowance, forever by road allowance that connects it to Lombard. Seems like a logical place for people to use to start their journey. Of course, we're at the northern terminus, the Catarac Way Trail, so it's going to give people an opportunity to achieve access to the trail. So more to come on that. The other big one is operationally, operationalizing the parks and recreation master plan. We talked a little bit about that in Stephanie's presentation. There's a lot of work to be done in that area. The, as we've learned, the, the understanding of the youth arena is one component of a whole host of recommendations. So Stephanie's working on coming up with a plan to start implementing those regulations. It's a great piece of work. We need to take action on it. And I would end by saying, the, the other one that's being worked on is programming and event plans for the town square. We have a beautiful new town square. We want to make sure that we're programming it properly, and we have a scheduling system, not unlike a ball field, or a ice hockey surface, or a soccer pitch. We need to make sure that people can access it and book it if they have it in, that they want to hold in town square. We're going to keep it as, as easy as possible to book. And so Stephanie will bring forward a recommendation for over the summer, early summer, to have a discussion about what that policy looks like. So that's a kind of a condensed version of 35 initiatives, but it'll give you a snapshot of some of the big ones, and be happy to answer any questions.
Councilor Robinson?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I just had one question, Malcolm, about the, and Paul, you'll probably get pulled into this. Is there any chance with the Confederation Bridge crossing that it will be completed before Old Home Week in 2025?
So remind me, when is Old Home?
It's August 2025.
Yes, in, in, you're the chair. The intention is to, I was just talking to Remin from, from TSI, so we've been in conversation over the last.
Yeah, so the question was if the, I think Federation will be commissioned, like Federation Bridge will be commissioned before Old Home Week, which is August 2025. So yeah, so I was just talking, texting Remin from TSI as we were sitting here, just to get an update. We've been in conversation quite a bit over the last couple of weeks and months. So the RFP for the design build, which council endorsed some time ago for a timber bridge, will be ready, the draft will be ready to come through my office this week. They've been working on it diligently, and for, for me to review before it actually gets issued. So the intent always has been that, you know, we, we bring on a contractor, once we award, and get to the abutment work this fall, like remove the old bridge, get the abutments installed, the bridge be constructed over, over the 2024, 2025 winter period, and be ready for placement in the spring. And then some of the other site work on the approaches would be done concurrently in the spring as, as well. So that's, that's the plan. Obviously, we'll need to get feedback from whoever the successful proponent is in terms of timelines, but that's kind of what I'm shooting for.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Councilor Village, you have anything else?
I did. That was one of my questions.
Sorry.
I have a few questions, and maybe, well, you're there, Director McMunn, if that's okay. The old slides sidewalk that we walked across.
Yeah.
Is there a piece still to be finished?
The west end closest to the park, or the northwest end?
Yeah.
There, there isn't, but talking to Councilor Brennan there a while ago, that's something that we can certainly incorporate into our ACPM, our asphalt concrete paving milling contract this year. So I can certainly mention that to Vanessa to include that. I think we were kind of putting off that until we had a good, clear vision of what lower reach, how it was going to transition and evolve into something different than what we have right now. But perhaps we can stage that accordingly to at least, it's asphalt at that west north end, and maybe perhaps we do a concrete transition.
Just to finish the accessibility.
Yeah. It's not very far. It's only, it wouldn't be 10 yards, 15 yards. It's just the second bridge ends, and then there's just a quick transition, then there, there is a sort of a gateway into the, into the park. So it's just a, just a few yards, I think. So that was that.
Yeah, I can work with Director Clark on that, and see if we can come up with something that, that makes sense, that, you know, won't, won't have to be changed or torn out when we, when the, when the park gets reconstructed, so.
Sorry, sorry, yeah.
Don't be sorry. We're on the same.
Go ahead.
I'm drawing a bit of a blank on the trailhead discussion, so I'm not sure, I may have been away that day, but, so the location is, has been chosen. Do we have a design plan? Will that be coming back to council for more? Just stop recalling them.
Perhaps one of our directors can give enough, but yes, it will.
You have a last one.
So it's nothing fancy, if I may. It's, at this point, we're just going to be doing some, putting in a parking lot and some wayfinding and other things. Part of the, the intention is to have a fulsome conversation with the Catarac Way Trail, friends of the Catarac Way Trail, to figure out what they want. And so we're going to be making sure that we have that discussion as well, before we move forward. We're likely going to phase it into a couple of different evolutions, so this is the start. But primarily, we need a place for people to park, a place for them to put their garbage, pack in and pack out, some wayfinding and some safety information. So that's kind of the space that we have right now in mind. We can certainly bring back when we do have a, we're not doing an official design, not a landscape designer are going to be coming in to do something, but we have general ideas. So after we talk with the Catarac Way Trail folks, we want to, we can bring it back and give you an update of what's happening if you'd like.
Thank you. Well, you were there.
Yep.
And then I'll stop, Mr. Chair, I promise. The area master plan for Smith's Falls by Parks Canada has been a long time under development. And so I'm, I'm curious if there's any real progress on this.
That's a great question.
So there, there has been some groundwork being done presently. So for instance, we've identified all of the strategic priority or conditions in this plan that can somehow affect Parks Canada, either through approvals process or if there's a partnership plan. So that, we've sent off to Parks Canada, we've asked for meetings, so that we can talk about which of these initiatives are contingent on Parks Canada's plan, and which are not. So we want to know which ones we have latitude to move with that affect the waterfront versus those that are contingent on their plan. And that will be an opportunity for us to understand what they're thinking. My hope is that we can take a partnership approach. A lot of the work that we're doing, I think, will complement and feed the plan that we're going to develop. Having said that, I don't know the scope of their plan, how granular it might be versus perhaps some of their cultural aspirations and expectations. So those discussions.
Okay, thank you.
Derek Pico, I think you're here.
Yeah, thank you. Oh, thank you, Director Clark. Let me look at the, the increase of tree canopy by 5% annually. How do we measure that? Because do we have a clear number of trees that are currently in our community, so we know what 5% is?
That is an excellent question. Carl? Egg team. We've just actually recently had a conversation about this last week or the week before. And so we do have some information that Carl can speak to, but we don't have an actual number at this point.
Within the next, through you, Mr. Chair, within the next couple of weeks, we will have a number. We've had, we've had summer students doing a GIS-based analysis of the, of the air photos that have been done for our area. 2019 is the most recent one, and through a fair amount of work, they've actually assessed each area. They've identified trees that are visual, create a polygon around that, and eventually added all of those up. We've also, and are able to create a, we're, we're just tabulating those numbers. We'll present those to, to council as, as our, sort of our baseline, following the tree canopy preservation plan that, that we'd approved a couple of years ago. But that will indicate the overall coverage for the town as a whole, plus specific areas. Our preliminary indications are that coverage for the town is likely fairly robust in terms of our overall targets, but that is heavily weighted based on some of the larger forested areas that are within the town boundaries, within the built-up area of the town. It varies significantly from neighborhood to neighborhood. But those, that information will be provided in the coming weeks. And then from there, we've documented the methodology that's, that was used to, to calculate the coverage, and we'll be able to replicate that for future years, once, when the, the air photos are replaced every, roughly every five, every five years. And it is just simply an indication of coverage versus not coverage. It's, there's certainly the opportunity in the coming years to look at tree health, tree location, what's on private property, what's on, on public property. At this point, we're just looking at the coverage on the canopy as a whole, over, over the town.
Did I follow? We said from 2019 is the imaging?
Yes.
Have we had, have we measured the amount, the volume of coverage that's lost due to the emerald ash borer on the ash trees? I'm wondering if our, our coverage today, despite tree planting, is actually potentially less than what it was in 2019 because of loss of trees?
Yes, I think that's, there is certainly the possibility. 2019 is the most recent figure we have for, for the overall, for, for the air photos that we use. But there is the possibility, when it's flown later, later on this year or next year, that the number may actually be lower for, for the reason that, that you've mentioned. Unfortunately, we have lost a number of very mature, mature ash trees and other trees that have been taken down for, for various reasons. We're doing our best to replace them, but certainly in terms of the canopy coverage, that is an incremental improvement that happens over, over years. Same thing with, with development as well.
Thank you. And I want to thank you for also bringing in the first and second words of the day with polygon. Perhaps you can explain that to us as well.
My, my apologies, yes. So when, when we're using our GI, our geographic information system mapping, then typically the layers, we can, we can toggle on, we can look at a, a layer that has all of the zoning, or a layer that has all of the, has all of the services, all of the pipes. We have another layer that shows these are where the, where heritage buildings are. Through our GIS providers and, and our, our summer staff, we've also created, we've created mapping that shows the areas where the tree coverage has been mapped in. And just graphically speaking, those in, those are identified as, as polygons. So this is just a shape of a blob on a map, and then taken together, repeated hundreds or thousands of times, you get a collection of polygons that represents our, our tree canopy. But that's just the technical word, the blob.
Brilliant, thank you. One more question for Director McMunn. We talked about the, we're doing the assessment, condition assessment for streets and sidewalks. And we know that the sidewalk's been around for a long time, and we're going to assess that condition. But at the same time, I know we've been doing. that condition, but at the same time, I know we've been doing summer grinding, we've been replacing corners to try to make them more accessible and less the barrier. I know there's still a number around, so will that be a factor when it comes to assessing the condition of sidewalks? Would the accessibility needs of the community be part of that equation?
Yeah, through the chair, absolutely. So as per minimum maintenance standards, we're obligated on an annual basis to do condition assessments for sidewalks. That's a way for the municipality to, you know, to protect the municipality. We go out, we do the assessment, we usually bring in a third party, a contract with whomever, it could be Safe Sidewalks of Canada, they've done that work for us before, to, to do the assessment, and then we can respond through our operating and our capital budgets to be able to do those, those improvements. So just mitigating risk throughout town and removing certain hazards. So the, one of the criteria that they do look for is accessible features, i.e., you know, appropriate crosswalks with, you know, somebody isn't walking across the crosswalk and coming up to full height curb. We've removed a number of those locations, particularly in the downtown core, on some of the, some of the side streets over the last couple of years. We've got in practice of, there's a new provincial standard and an AODA requirement to put in tactile walking surface indicators. We call them twizzies in the business at crosswalks. We have a number of them on the crosswalks in the, in the downtown core up Echo Street. So we do, yes, we do do those, those improvements. We do as many as we can in-house with our own public works resources, particularly at intersections that need to be addressed. We'll go in and remove those and put in proper depressed sidewalks. One thing I will note, though, you know, the, a lot of those sidewalks are deficient in width. They're an old standard, they're 1.2 meters or four feet. New Ontario Provincial Standards and Specifications suggest that sidewalks should be a minimum 1.5 meters or five feet clear width, which is a, an AODA requirement as well. But of course, we're not going to get into full replacement until we get into a reconstruction of that, that street, so. Yeah, so like Malcolm mentioned in the, the strategic update there, we're looking at doing a kind of an in-house roads needs assessment as well with, with my staff, but I do have a couple of young engineers on staff now that have some experience with that. So we'll take things like our, the work that we did through Street Scan a couple of years ago with the, the assessment of, of our road surfaces, and they develop a breakdown of what they call pavement condition index, so a rating of zero to 10, zero being really, really poor, 10 being good. We're somewhere around a, between a five and a six right now for our, for our road networks. So we're trying to integrate, integrate that and weave that all together, you know, the road surface, the sidewalk condition, our linear infrastructure condition from our Asset Management Plan to come up with a plan that makes sense. Of course, we don't want to go through and spend a whole lot of capital dollars on rehabilitating a road surface and or sidewalk and then turn around five years later and tear it all up to replace the underground, and, and as a result of that, you'd have to replace everything up top that you spent a whole bunch of money on. So we're really trying to develop a strategic approach to that and so we can kind of integrate everything in together so it, so it makes sense. So that is in the works, hoping that we have something in front of council for, to look at by the end of the calendar year.
Okay, well, thank you. It's encouraging to know that a community with an aging population and a lot of people living with physical disabilities or limitations, that we've got to focus on those areas that need the attention, so.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One, just to thank staff for the update on the strategic plan, and two, just to comment on, I, when I, when I read it, I think we had it properly. There's, it looks like we are being strategic, and I, and I think we nailed it when we did it, and it's, and seeing the results is, is really encouraging. I wanted to hone in if I could on the Asset Management Plan coming up in July, and it might be just for me, but CEO Morris hinted at the, just the heft of that new plan and the, and the opportunity of having that and the future direction. So for me, rather, not rather, and if other council members feel the same way, I, I would like, before I get that report, another orientation to Asset Management Plan and what the potential of it is and what the opportunities are. And then when we get the report, because it's, I have this idea, I'm not like formal, and I'm not looking for a course, because AMO offers those, but just an orientation to Asset Management Planning again for council and the opportunities going forward, because then when I get the report, it'll have much more meaning, because I think, I see the tremendous potential of it in this upgraded, so I don't know if that could be arranged, and I could commit on my own, or if anybody wanted to join me, I, so just.
The short answer is absolutely. We'll do that over the summer. I think that's a great idea, a great background, and I think there's an education that's going to be known for council, for the public as well, to understand how we take all these priorities and weave them together and come up with an annual legend. I think we can unlock the mystery behind that, if someone's had a good one.
Raise the profile like we have with our Water Treatment Plan, and we really, the public has an opportunity to really understand, so thank you.
I agree with that, and I've heard a lot about that in the last four days, Asset Management Plan.
Yes.
National. Any other comments, questions? Okay, thank you. Lots going on, and I think that we're doing pretty good on, I think, what I think was a very ambitious, strappy, we've done more, so thank you for that. Okay. We have no committee board or external organizations updates. We have two pieces of correspondence for your information, or maybe action. The one is just information, it's a resolution from council of Bonfield Township supporting this council's resolution on the Basic Income Guarantee Program. And secondly, we have a correspondence from Erin Lee from Interval House requesting that she, she included a piece of correspondence proposed to be sent out to pass Bill 173, which is of course to declare the prospect of declaring a partner violence, a epidemic. So there's that for your review, I'm sure you read it, so. CEO Morris?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just add that unfortunately, the timing wasn't particularly good here, the legislature rose last, it was at summer, so that, we will also speak to this.
Okay, okay. Well, it could be resisted, I guess, in the fall. We have no notice of motions, and we've come to the time that I'm looking for a motion that the committee adjourned its proceedings tonight, I'm going to say at 6:56, and stand so adjourned until the next duly called committee meeting, moved by Counselor Robinson, second by, second by someone? Counselor Miller? I don't want to say. All in favor?
Such a good ear.
Through the chair.